Okay, the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communication from the public. Is there anyone who wants to address this body before? Just raise your hand if you do, otherwise, in which case I'll read this very long disclaimer, otherwise I'm going to skip it and we'll move on. Okay. Since there's no one from the public that would like to speak, we'll go to item three, which is the oath of office for Commissioner Travis Mann, which is not going to happen because Commissioner Travis Mann is not here. So skipping right along in record pace, we're now on four. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner show requests, in which case the item will be removed, removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. So item A is consider the minutes, approving the minutes of the planning and zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, July twenty-second, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approval by Rives, second by Kerner. All in favor? No one opposed, passes unanimously. Already on page two, gosh. Next on the agenda are our action items. According to the P and Z Rules of Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. There's a proposed amendment to the permitted use table. We will conduct a public hearing to regard proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance Section seven point P point six, permitted use table, including updates to categories because of changes to the North American Industry Classification System, also called NAICS Reference Book, changes in allowed uses in commercial zoning districts and to remove subnotes B period five period S one, which was inadvertently left off, changes made with ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash oh one. Becky, would you provide staff summary of this item?
Yes, sir. So the subcommittee worked on this and we brought it to the full commission last time. The updates that we made to the categories were because of updates to the NAICS book itself, so they rearranged some, some category numbers and some titles of categories. We also allowed uses in commercial zoning districts that would, we allowed them in industrial that were already allowed in commercial backwards.
Right.
So we have not removed any uses, we've expanded some uses, and we removed that subnote, that S one process that was left over from an old ordinance. So if y'all have any questions about our previous conversations.
So since this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak for this item? Is there anyone from the public willing, who wishes to speak against this item? Seeing none in either case, public hearing is closed. So now we move on to consider making a recommendation regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance Section seven point P point six, permitted use table, including updates to categories because of changes to the NICS Reference Book, changes in allowed use in the commercial zoning districts and to remove subnote B five S one, which was inadvertently left off, changes made with ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash oh one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This time it was reversed, motion by Kerner and second by Rives. Any discussion?
We talked this in the subcommittee and, you know, these are pretty standard updates based on, as Becky mentioned, the updates to the Reference Book, so I didn't see any, any objection to making those changes. And then really expanding the categories that were there made a lot of sense because something that was available in commercial but not in industrial didn't make a lot of sense, so I'll pretty stay forward.
Marcus?
I read through all of it and it all looked good to me, lots of things cleaned up. So I didn't have any issues with any changes.
Commissioner Conrad?
We met in the subcommittee and I think it was just more maintenance getting everything cleaned up.
Commissioner Browns?
Nothing to add.
Okay, and I have no comments other than what's already been echoed several times, so with that, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And for those in the crowd, we're now on page three. Discussing, discussion, section six, discuss proposed amendments to Appendix A, which is the sign ordinance. Becky, would you provide a staff summary of this at this time, please?
Yes, sir. So this is another of the ordinance subcommittee's tasks. We initially started working on it because there was some desire to expand the prohibition on LED lights in storefront windows from the downtown to either citywide or just in the COD. That was part of what the subcommittee talked about. But while we were working on the LED lights, we did go ahead and look at the sign ordinance in its entirety. There were a lot of cleanup items, not a whole lot of substance as far as changes. I can kind of hit the highlights. I don't know if anybody looked at all the, the red lines. It looks, it looks crazy, but I did try and put comments on like every single one that we touched so we could remember why we did it. In the definitions, we added, deleted, and updated some definitions just to make things more concise and make more sense. We created a procedures and standards for administration. Most code of ordinances says this is, you're allowed to do this, this is who is allowed to do this, and you charge fees for it and that type thing, so we added those details in there. We created a measurement standard section, so that helps the plan reviewer explain to people how they measure the signage when they turn in their permit drawings. We clarified some illumination standards as far as lighting that can be shined on a sign, not, not illuminated signs, but like uplighting on signs. Clarified portable sign standards. We created a construction sign section because we do get quite a few signs on construction sites, people wanting to advertise, you know, their builders, their lenders, their, and you, you don't want it to get overwhelming. It can look pretty messy when you get too many of those. Along that same vein, we combined subdivision signs, builder signs, model home signs, all into one section, so they're pretty much all the same type of sign, so now they all have the same square footage, height requirements, things like that. We updated the political sign section. That's based on the Texas Election Code, chapter two fifty-nine, so we match the state. We updated the street banner section. If anybody attended or watched the city council workshop with the, the banner sign that goes over five eighteen, they had a conversation about man-hours and how much it costs and, you know, the procedures to do that. So in response to that, city attorney Karen had already drafted that section, so we put that in there. Updated another section to be compliant with state code, that was the obsolete signs. They have kind of very specific requirements for obsolete signs, which are, you know, a business goes away, but the sign's still there, so we cleaned that up. Distinguish between non-conforming signs and signs that obtain certificates of lawful non-conformity. When the sign ordinance had a, had a major rewrite years ago, city staff went around and they took pictures of all the signs that were going to become non-conformant, and they allowed those sign owners to submit paperwork to keep on file that says they know they're non-conformant, and there were certain rules for that, so we cleaned that up a little bit. And we added an appeals process because if the sign reviewer says no, then they, you know, you have to have an avenue to, to try and work through that. We have another section to discuss, but does anybody have any questions or comments on any of these?
Why don't we step through people one at a time and, and see how it goes? The intent here is, the sign ordinance kind of went through this some time ago, so I expect Kathy and I will probably have a few comments, but anybody else who sees something? The goal is to get this in shape to where I presume we're going to vote on it next time to put it forward to city council after that, so.
Depending on the comments here, if we need to make changes and bring it back, we can do that. Or if they're small enough changes and y'all are comfortable with staff making those, then we can just get it slated for a public hearing at a later date, and then eventually it'll go to city council.
Got it.
So we'll see which, we'll see what y'all come up with.
So if you're okay, Commissioner Rives, you have any comments? Did you read through it? Anything stand out? Okay.
I agree.
You're good?
I actually didn't have any other comments.
Okay, you had enough already in here. I saw your name shows up liberally. Commissioner Browns?
The only, only question I had, and I'm not, not opposed to it, is I believe on page ten at the very top, it talked about lights from November fifteenth to end of the December, and.
November fifteen to January fifteen.
Right, to January fifteenth, and so my only observance is that I know that there is the Festival of Lights that happens in October. I don't know if they wanted to consider that or not. I didn't know how deep they wanted to get into things, so that's really the only question I had, just, not that we need to adopt that, but was that thought of?
Is the Festival of Lights?
It's called Diwali.
It's Diwali.
Where, where is that?
It's a, um, not Indian, it's. Yeah, Hindu, Hindu. It's a celebration of life.
Oh, I understood.
The movement of life.
It is a religious holiday festival.
So, and it's all lights. I mean, it's, you'll, you'll see a lot of homes around Friendswood nowadays have lights starting at the very first part of October, and it's, it's due to Diwali. And I don't, I don't know if businesses will celebrate that or not, but that's, that's a pretty big deal. You may see lights because of that. Again, I'm not saying we need to change the code, I'm just bringing it up.
Good comment. It has, I don't think it has been an issue to date, but who knows going forward?
October to November is when it's held. There you go.
When is it?
October to November.
The whole month?
Yeah, both months.
It's, it's two months, I think.
If we can, we can make the date earlier, we could make it October first if the commission was interested.
I don't know. Yeah, it kind of dilutes it if you're letting it go for, you know, an extra two months.
Right.
The idea was, but.
Or if it comes up and it's an issue, we can address it at that time.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking because.
I think that would be appropriate.
It hasn't been an issue. I don't want to step on other people's religious beliefs, especially if they run a commercial establishment and want to celebrate this. But since it hasn't been an issue, I hate to adjust the entire thing just for that. I don't know how everybody else feels. So, I've never heard of it.
Not many people have.
To my knowledge, there hasn't been an issue so far.
It, it's starting to be a bigger thing nowadays around Texas.
Yeah, if you notice, people put up lights really early, they're really, they may not be doing it really early for the Christmas holiday, they may actually be doing it for, for the Festival of Lights.
Okay, yes, let's.
We'll cross that bridge.
Let's leave, leave sleeping dogs to life on that one, and if it becomes an issue, we will address it. We certainly don't want to exclude portions of our community from what they, you know, what a religious holiday is, but since it doesn't seem to be a major factor here.
Okay.
My only item was, I, I had written down some notes in a book, and I brought the wrong book, and so I have to remember, but it basically says somewhere in this very long narrative that there is a sign czar, except it wasn't called a sign czar, it was a person who will be regulating it, and it gave them an official title, and I was wondering, who is that?
The sign administrator.
Yes.
Technically would be Aubrey. She's the director of the department, but it's delegated down to our code officer because she is out driving around all day long, and so she's very familiar with, you know, businesses going in and out.
Okay, so that's the first line of interpretation of enforcement of the code?
Yeah, so sign administrator would be her. If there was an, if somebody had an issue with her interpretation, they would go to her boss, which is the building official, and then if, you know, they needed to go further, then it would be Aubrey.
All the way to Aubrey.
Really came down to it, it'd be zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like we're pretty much all in agreement on this. We go forward, and so the, I guess we can expect to see this on next month's, next two weeks' agenda from now.
We, we do have one other item that just came up that I was going to let Aubrey talk to y'all about as far as the sign ordinance goes. It's not in this draft because it, it just came up.
I know what this is.
So we had, we have a project that's going through right now. We, they've submitted plans for review. So, and it's kind of a new use for the city, so we're getting our first community hospital. And so they have submitted plans, it's the Walgreens at five, five twenty-eight and Bay Area Boulevard, so they have two street frontages at the corner. On their proposed site plan, they asked for two monument signs, one on each street frontage. The code only allows one monument sign currently. So we let them know, unless you exceed forty thousand square feet, then you're allowed to have two monument signs. So we just met with them this week, that's one of their desires, so I let them know that we were reviewing the sign ordinance currently and that I would bring it up to, you know, this committee and see if there was any interest in, you know, adding a provision for a second monument sign. Their concern is that, you know, when somebody's rushing to the hospital or the emergency, it's emergency room with a few hospital rooms, you know, moms, you know, that may have an injured child, that the additional signage would help, you know, direct traffic more quickly. They are required to have like ambulance entry signs, which I think we can achieve with our existing directional signs. They have to have red letters that are eight inches in size directing ambulance traffic, which, like I said, that's not an issue, but the second monument sign I wanted to discuss with y'all, so get your thoughts on, you know, if it, if we allow like institutional uses to have two signs, if we allow businesses with two street frontages to have two signs, like I don't, we can do some brainstorming if you want us to and bring something back.
Informal session, so I just, to speak freely and, and give your thoughts. It's kind of sprung on you a little bit at the last minute, but.
Yeah, sorry for that.
While people are digesting it a little bit, I have thought a little bit about it. When I heard about this, I said, boy, that's probably okay, you're right at major intersection, but then I looked at the Walgreens at five eighteen and five, and five twenty-eight, they have one monument sign, seems to, it doesn't seem like anybody would miss it from that and, and the other ones. I, I'm not sure it needs it. If there is a, I, I'm sympathetic to the comment you made about, you know, emergency access, you know, you're, you're not thinking maybe clearly as your child is screaming in the backseat and you're trying to get him into the hospital right away. But if it already has an ambulance sign going there, I'm not sure how a monument sign, would this monument sign, I guess, say this is the name of the hospital, or would it say come this way for emergency care?
I believe the monument sign would be the name of the hospital.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm less sympathetic to that. I mean, it's, it's extra advertising, but, but that's my thought. If we were going to do it on major intersections on the corner of, you know, any of the major thoroughfares, I wouldn't have a big objection, but I, I would not push it personally.
Is there any precedence that we have from other communities locally?
Honest, like I said, it just came up like yesterday, so I haven't looked into that yet. We could, we could do some research and see.
Might be good to see if, if they're, what the zoning laws are for Lake City, maybe. They have a number of hospitals in their community, so.
Yeah, we could definitely check theirs.
Just a thought.
Anyone else?
I'll put you on the spot, Aubrey, because I haven't had time to review this, and hopefully you'll remember it from, from memory. Do we have an issue with having two signs that are twenty-five foot each instead of one sign at fifty? Can we do two signs like that?
So the code right now says one monument sign.
Up to fifty square feet.
Per parcel, so that's the limiting factor. Our code also used to say one wall sign, and we changed that years ago to allow businesses to split up their sign area, their allotted sign areas. So McDonald's, for instance, on the corner of five eighteen and five twenty-eight, they were only allowed to have one wall sign, so we took just the word one out of there, and they're allowed to, they use their, the side of the building that has their front entrance, so they get to use their side building, uh, front, linear frontage to calculate their sign area, and then they can split it up however they see fit. So we did make that change years ago, but the monument sign has remained one monument sign, unless you have forty thousand square feet or more, you can have two.
Good job. I've, I've read all that, I just don't remember what it said.
No, it's fine.
Or if it addressed the two signs.
Yeah.
I, I kind of leaned towards what Richard said. Immediately I was thinking of the other Walgreens being on the corner like that, and that you can see that sign from everywhere. I didn't think about the ambulance entrance, so I, I, right now, having digested it for all of three minutes, I, I'm going to just side with, with him on that one. That's where I lean right now.
Do you know if it's going to have like hospital across the top of the building or anything of that nature?
They are allowed to have wall sign as well, so.
Well, I'm sure that's going to be pretty well lit up.
And we did let them know that they can illuminate their wall signage, so.
It, it used to be a Walgreens, and I don't think anybody had a trouble finding it, although they do quite a business, so maybe it was because of the signs. I shouldn't say that.
I will say, their limiting fact, like the Walgreens here, their sign is on the very hard corner.
Right.
They can't do that because the Autumn Creek subdivision sign is on that corner. So there is a little bit of a limiting factor with the location of their sign.
Anyone else?
Just a lot of factors, you know, to, to think of.
Well, and, and like I said, I don't, I didn't expect an answer from y'all tonight, honestly. I just, like I said, it was last minute, and I apologize for springing it on you, but the timing was kind of, you know, optimal as well. Just wanted y'all to think about it.
If we're going to defer it a week, that gives me a chance to drive by there and just kind of see the lay of the land and see if we want to make an exception or create a new rule for one outfit.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, it is, that would not be a light decision that we would need to make tonight, like I said, because if we make a change, it's, it's not just going to affect their property, it's going to affect a lot, you know, and have other, you know, maybe unintended consequences, we don't know, but.
Well, I just wonder in this case if the, the fact that the corner is not available for signage because of the subdivision, if that is consideration, because that wouldn't apply to most other places.
Right.
Yeah. So our path forward is to let this cogitate for a week and then come back and bring it up again next week? Is that the plan? Okay.
Yeah.
So much for my fast accelerating through.
I'm sorry. I kind of blew that plan.
No, but that's fine. We need to get it right, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Okay.
I'd rather kind of take a break of two weeks and get it fixed now rather than having to.
Do it all over again.
Take the ordinance all over again, so yeah.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to item seven, which is communications. And we will start with receiving an update from Fries and Nichols regarding the city's impact fees, Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Jill?
Good evening. I'm Hill Arias. I'm the Director of Engineering here at the City of Friendswood, for those of you that don't know me. I'm here to introduce to you the presenter for this item tonight. Kendall Ryan is with Fries and Nichols, and the city hired Fries and Nichols a couple of months ago to work on updating the, the impact fee assessment that occurs when a new house is built. What is an impact fee? That's exactly why Kendall is here today. He's going to present a impact fee one-on-one presentation to you guys, and you'll come to have a little bit better understanding of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how exactly the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission fits into the whole picture. So this is your introduction into the subject, and I'll turn it over to him right now.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
I was told I have to point over this way. Hold on. All right. Okay, we got the clicker worked out. It's going to be a good night. Okay, well, it's great to be here with y'all tonight. I really appreciate the time. Hill did a fantastic job. I don't even have to tell you my name now. I, I do have Richard Weatherly here with me as well. Richard and I are both with Fries and Nichols, we're both based out of the Pearland office, just right down five twenty-one. So tonight is very informal. This is absolutely what Hill said, it's an informational session. Please feel free to ask questions. You don't have to save them for the end. I've only got about fifteen slides anyway to kind of just go through. Hopefully I don't bore you to tears tonight, and we'll, we'll go from there. So tonight we're going to talk about what is an impact fee and kind of give you some of the, the language around the components. There's a lot of acronyms and concepts we want to talk about and go over. Maybe by show of hands, how many of you seen it, you know, been through an impact fee before? Two, okay, cool. So this is fresh, fresh ears for, for most of you, that's good. This is our agenda. It's very simple, only a few slides each. We're going to talk about a couple of basics about what impact fees are. There's three, the next three items are really kind of like the core components of an impact fee, of your land use assumptions. So future planning, you're, you're usually thinking about land use as part of this committee. Water and wastewater capital improvement plans. You might be a little bit less used to thinking about, you know, water and wastewater infrastructure projects, but we'll talk about how that plays into this, and then the actual analysis of the impact fee itself, and we'll talk about path forward. So again, please feel free to just raise your hand, don't raise your hand, shout out, get my attention, and we'll go from there, so. Impact fees are, before I read you what's on the slide, I'll just, just say it this way. You know, the city gets revenue from water and sewer rates, right? Everyone that has a house or has a business pays a water and sewer bill. Those water and sewer rates go into an enterprise fund to help maintain the water and wastewater systems of the city. What an impact fee does is it's, it's not a monthly assessment, it's a one-time charge for new development to help offset the cost of the capital improvement projects that actually serve that new development. So we'll talk in a little bit about what it's for. It's not for ongoing maintenance and repair of the existing system. It's all for new or recently constructed projects that still have room to serve growth in the city. It is a systematic and structured approach. The whole concept there is that it is governed by the Texas Administrative Code, and we'll talk about that briefly. But we, we like to throw this slide in here with the scales because it does kind of throw, kind of introduce the concept that with impact fees, new development can help pay for some of the cost of the infrastructure, and without it, your existing and your future ratepayers pay all of the cost of the infrastructure through their water and sewer bills. You know, the City of Friendswood made a policy decision years and years ago to have impact fees, so, so we're not here to discuss whether to have them, they already exist. This is just kind of a mandated update, so it's kind of informational about the regular update of the impact fees. So who here has ever memorized chapter three ninety-five of the Texas Local Government Code? Oh, wow. I was going to say Brian. Teacher's pet over here. No, it's, it's, it's not fun reading. It's very lawyer-y, but, but it is the basis of what impact fees are. The legislature got together a long time ago and basically said, here's how this is going to work. So these studies, there's not a lot of room for creativity. You're, you're following a bunch of rules to determine what an impact fee is going to be. We're here in two thousand and twenty-three, we're in twenty-three, right? Yeah. We're here in two thousand and twenty-three because about five years ago is when the last time Friendswood's impact fee was updated, and the state requires a five-year update. You can do it sooner, but you can't wait longer than five years. The reasons to have them, we've kind of touched on this a little bit, but it does help the city recoup some of those costs and offset the burden on the existing customers. It helps growth pay for a share of the growth. That's kind of one of the, the taglines of impact fees. This sort of highlighted bar on the bottom of the slide you're looking at, that's kind of where you come in. So cities that have planning and zoning commissions, the, the state allows for the planning and zoning commission to operate as the SEAC, so your first big acronym of the night. Congratulations, you're going to be the SEAC, the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. And so your role, and we'll talk about this more, is to provide input under the study. You're also going to have a chance to provide written comments to the council. The state requires that council make the actual decision, but the SEAC gets first look at all of the information that goes into the impact fee. They want the planning and zoning vis a vis the SEAC looking at the land use assumptions, because that's what you do best. They want you looking at the, the proposed impact fee, fee itself, all before it goes to council. I told you it's not fun reading. We went ahead and copied some of the text here. We won't go through it word for word, but basically it's got to be at least five members. And then if the, this is kind of what I was saying a moment ago, if a city or a political subdivision has a planning and zoning, you're allowed to serve as the SEAC. And then for your, in, for Friendswood's case specifically, y'all already have an ordinance that kind of says, hey, our planning and zoning is going to be our SEAC, that. Uh, that basically keeps the council from having to take action every time to appoint you as the C I A C.
Aubrey, can you remind me who is our representative, who's our real estate wizard? It says here you have one, and I remember it used to be Brett.
Real Estate or Development.
Sorry?
Marcus, is that person now?
Congratulations, Marcus, I was trying to make sure that whoever it was knew that they were the person.
It, it doesn't have to be like a designated person.
Can you define my role?
Yeah, you, you just make the body legitimate. Yeah. Congratulations again. No, the, the state just wants someone from the real estate development or building community who can have a little bit of sensitivity to their side of the table. When development's gonna come in and have to pay impact fees, that's what that's for. You don't have a, a disproportionate speaking or responsibility role, you're just there.
Just doing what you're already doing.
Um, okay, so the role of the C I A C, so guide the conduct, that's fancy words for, we're gonna come give you information. Again, you'll see it really before the council sees all the information and the public, y'all will have first cut at, do you think the land use assumptions makes sense? Uh, does the number make sense, things like that, so, um, you'll have a chance to provide input, we will be back again, we'll show you a scheduler, we will be back again in this room. In a few months to give you kind of the results, uh, and talk about it. Um, and then the, the written comments is simply, um, a letter that, um, has to be certified by your chairperson that says. You know, either unanimously or not unanimously, here's our thoughts on, on the, on the, the fee, um, and the results of the study.
Is that effectively the minutes from this meeting?
Uh, it'll be a separate piece of paper that has to be signed.
We would do, uh, just a recommendation memo, um, like we do for zone changes.
Ah, okay.
All right, so what?
Probably just an excerpt from the meeting minutes, I would think, I mean, something of that sort.
Drafted from that.
Yeah, or drafted from that, maybe a little more deep, okay.
Yeah, and we, and we, we'll, we'll work with Aubrey on the, you, I don't think it'll be anything extra that the.
No, we would just work with the chairman, uh, and, I mean, we would use the minutes and the discussion as a guide, but the chairman would ultimately. Like, he drafts or has input on all of our recommendation memos.
Yeah. Um, all right, so I kinda foreshadowed this a minute ago, so what's eligible for impact fees? Um, on the left you see what can be paid for with impact fees. Um, anything related to capital, infrastructure projects that serve growth and colluding, surveying and engineering fees, your acquisition of the land. This is a big one, the debt service, so all that amortized debt schedule that, that, you know, you take out a bond to pay for a capital improvement. That can all be factored into the impact fee as long as it's, again, helping to serve growth. Uh, the things that cannot be, um, included are anything that's not identified in the impact fee C I P. Um, or any, any repair and ongoing maintenance of existing facilities, um, for replacement of, you know, worn-out pumps and things of that nature, those are not eligible to be paid for with impact fee funds. All right, so, um, so now we're talking about kinda where we've been and where we're going, and a couple more basics. Your existing impact fee ordinance, uh, was, was adopted in February of twenty nineteen, so that means that, that's why we're on the clock now to have this done by February of twenty twenty-four. Um, which we are on track to do. Um, impact fees, uh, are assessed by water meter size, so we have at the bottom of the table here, um, an example. Uh, this is actually your current, um, City of Friendswood impact fee assessment table. So, the way this works is if someone needs a one-inch meter, then they have, currently have a total water and wastewater impact fee of four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars in the top right of the table. And then, based on the size of the meter, as the size of the meter goes up, meaning more water can flow through the meter, meaning more impact on the system. The impact fee goes up proportionally with that. And so, the way that water meters work is, is each one has a safe maximum operating capacity, and the way you, you, it's, it's a ratio, so a, a two-inch meter. Is three times the amount of water that a one-inch meter, it's not based on the meters, two to one is not, the, the ratio, it's, it's a, not linear, so, so there's more water, three times as much water.
Geometric, but it's not actually one and two inch, it's a little different, so it works out to be three times, yeah.
That's right, so a two-inch meter is worth three times what a one-inch meter is, so the impact fee is three times, uh, what, what it is for a one-inch meter.
So Aubrey, is it safe to assume that almost all of our meters are one-inch?
All of our, most of our residential meters are one-inch, that's the minimum now.
Right.
Um, a lot of the older meters, there may be five-eighths and three-quarter inch meters on older homes, but our new minimums.
The overwhelming majority is just a top row, and those others are all exceptions?
Yes.
Okay.
Commercial properties also pay impact fees, so if a commercial business puts in a two-inch meter.
That's correct.
Yeah, I can see commercial needing more, especially if it's in some kind of si- situation where they use a lot of water, right?
And to your point there, Richard, in, in Friendswood, this overwhelming majority is residential one-inch meter, so, that's right. Okay, so where we are in the process, do not have to memorize this, we are, uh, we're on the top line right here, that's, that's you guys, that's, y'all need to be kind of understanding what's happening from the beginning. Um, the next two bars are the land use assumptions and the capital, uh, improvement plan, we are already at work on those items, we're already working with your staff on those items. Um, we're, everything's in, you know, preliminary draft form right now, we're still wor- working on, on the, the different analysis that the state requires. Um, the next thing that's going to happen is we are going to actually go to council and do a very similar, almost the same exact presentation, give them an informational session. About the fact that we're doing a five-year update, how they will be responsible for ultimately setting the new impact fee, deciding on the number. But, but that informational session will be just like this, and we're not giving them the details yet, cause we're still working through the actual study. Then we will, uh, the next blue line is actually figure out what the impact fee is, then the, the next red line near the bottom is coming back to you. Giving you the first look again at, at the land use assumptions, the C I P and the impact fee. Once you have had a chance to have your input, ask questions, you know, we, we just went, walked through this with Pearland a few months ago, they're, they're planning and zoning, said, hey, I wanted, you know, this land use over here. We just changed the future land use plan last week, we wanna change this, so we changed that, we worked the, you know, adjusted the impact fee, that's the kind of input that you have the chance to have, that's what the state wants you to do. Um, and then, uh, once, once y'all are happy with it, we will advertise it to the public, we'll go to council, have the public hearing, and then the council will, will set the actual, the new fee. Um, let, let me also say there, before I get misunderstood, the, the council gets to set the fee up to the max allowable that the study determines. That's really the engineer's role in this whole study, is to follow the state rules and say, here's the ceiling, here's the maximum. The council can actually set it to zero if they want, they can do anything up to or the ceiling all the way down to zero. Um, our role i- is, is to just calculate the max allowable, we're not here to recommend the fee, that's the, the policymaking bodies, uh, roles. Okay, so, if you're not bored yet, we'll get, we'll go into even more information, so, um, again, we're still working on Friendswoods, we've got a couple of draft examples here. Uh, this is from the City of Dayton up in Liberty County, um, showing you, giving a flavor of what you'll see, uh, when we get the Friendswood maps prepared. On both the service area and the future developments. Um, the way this works is we define the cer- delineate the service area, it's actually really simple for Friendswood, cause it's your city limits, you don't really have an E T J, you're completely. Bounded by other exterior, uh, other, uh, political subdivisions. Uh, then we'll, we'll catalog the existing population and commercial developments, we'll project the ten-year population in commercial developments. And then we will calculate that ten-year growth in service units, all goes back to that meter size thing again, and we'll talk about that more. Then the next thing we do is we look at the capital improvement plans, um, again, this is an example from your sister city in Pearland. Um, one good thing to note here is that, um, Hill and your staff and the, and the various teams here, they've been doing a great job over the last couple of years of doing. The necessary studies are gonna feed into this, you're familiar with the ongoing, uh, comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, that's obviously very important. But there was a study done, uh, within the last year, completed within the last year on the water system. That recommended a lot of water infrastructure and looked at how future growth and was gonna require different, you know, pipes and pumps and things like that. We will be taking that information from that study and plugging it into this, to this study. The city is also going through an ongoing wastewater study right now to do the same thing, and we're kinda synced up and married up with their schedule to be able to extract. The wastewater recommendations from there as well, so, getting the best, latest, greatest information from those dedicated studies, paying off to, to plug into, into your impact fee update. All right, you don't have to do math tonight, again, informational, I do have a very simple equation here for you, this is actually how the state requires you to calculate the impact fee, again. Really, the, the concepts on this slide are the terminology, so when we come back, uh, this is not the first time you've heard of an E S U or a rate credit or things like that, so. We'll spend just a moment going through this, um, it really comes down to a, a division problem, you gotta calculate what's in the top and what's in the bottom, and then divide the two and get the impact fee. The top is all about cost, how much do the projects cost? And the bottom is about how much growth are you gonna have? And so, and, and everything boils down to an impact fee per E S U. So, we'll start with the E S U, that's the equivalent service unit, that is a single-family home, if you're building a single-family home. If you're building a strip center that's gonna have three buildings in it and it has a two-inch meter, that's the same as three single-family homes. So, that, that's three E S Us, that's the whole concept there. The eligible C I P cost is how much of the projects that you're putting in, these pipes and pump stations and wastewater, uh, lift stations. How much is that is gonna serve growth of the next ten years? This is where the state asks that an engineer get involved and kinda look at the models, look at the, the growth, look at the way the system works and understand if it's a. If it's a ten-million-dollar project, we're, we're gonna use thirty percent of that capacity in the next ten years, well then, three million dollars goes into the impact fee. That's what that eligible C I P red cost is. The rate credit, so that's a very fancy word for saying, cut the cost in half. That's, uh, basically the, the, the state says, you, you take your eligible C I P cost, you, you. Calculate a rate credit equal to fifty percent, or cut it in half, um, that's what you do to the cost in the numerator, and then the, the denominator is just that growth in service units. So, how many of those equivalent service units do we think are gonna be coming in in the next ten years, that's again informed by your future land use plan assumptions.
Has that rate credit always been there? I, I don't remember that last time, was it? I just missed it, okay, I'd forgotten that, okay.
Yep.
So it's half of the C I, of the expected.
Half of the C I P that serves growth in the next ten years.
Yeah, okay, so half is borne by the ongoing ratepayers and half is borne by the, okay.
Great, that's right. All right, um, one more concept slide about this equivalent service unit. Um, we've kinda talked about this a little bit, um, but basically, um, this is just to illustrate visually. That a two-inch water meter is worth about three one-inch water meters, and a shopping center is, is like three homes. All right, so, this is an important, um, this is an important slide, we're almost done, uh, this will be a big talking point at the public hearing. Um, what this is, is a comparison of what Friendswoods is, so kinda look out over to the right where the purple box is, that's your current. Combined water and wastewater impact fee of four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then all the other bars, those are your kinda neighboring sister cities, of course, most of them are here in southeast Texas. Um, and that's their, their current adopted water and wastewater impact fees. Um. Because so much of the impact fee is based on the cost, that's where the formula really starts. We've seen impact fees go up, really a lot in the last few years, because the cost of projects goes up. That's really, that's really what is the biggest factor in, in calculating the impact fee, so, um. You know, we're certainly not done with the study yet, but I can tell you that Friendswood's impact fee, the max allowable, if council decides and it's based on y'all's input. The max allowable will be more than four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, once the study calculates the new infrastructure costs. Give y'all just a moment to digest this and see if y'all have any questions about this.
What's the reason why Fullsher is so, so much more higher than everybody else?
Yeah.
Lack of water or what, what's?
Yeah, I'm gonna actually invite Richard to kinda give, Ri- Richard led that study, we're working on all of it together, but I, I kinda want you to get, hear this straight from Richard. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one of them, they're, they're the fastest-growing city in the state of, of their size. And also, they did not take the fifty percent methodology, they did the rate credit. But since they have not used, they have not done any projects using, um, rates, uh, yet, cause they're just starting. They, they basically were able to take about ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent of their maximum, so really, you take like, uh, you know, some of these other ones, like Dayton. You know, Dayton's real maximum is twenty-two thousand, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand, but they took fifty percent of that to get to the eleven. Fullsher did not have to do that, and their city council just decided to, they didn't want this to impact their existing residents at all. And so, their decision was to set it as high as they possibly could. Um, you know, o- on the other side of the spectrum is College Station, which we also do, their council set it way less than fifty percent of the maximum. Because they have, it's a university town, they have other ways to get revenue, they just decided to, you know, not impact the development and, and have it. Have all these fall on the ratepayers, so, it's kind of, you know, two different decisions. Um, you know, other, most everybody else is in the same range, because. The cost of water or wastewater is kinda depending on what year you're building all your projects, you know, this year for everybody, it's about the same. Fullsher's a little bit different, cause they're having to build the first line to get anywhere, long distances, to get to their first customer, whereas y'all. Some cities that are already on their way are, have already built the line, and now they're just tagging along developments in there, but they're building all their first stuff right now. So, y'all are on the more mature, way more mature side of the, um, growth curve, so, a lot of it will be. Upgrading something you already have, or, you know, extending services just a little bit of distance to get to the next area, so, y'all will, um, you know. Be in a different boat than Fullsher.
What I remember from four years ago, and you can correct me if I'm, I'm thinking wrong, the, the calculation gets a little wonky if you don't have much capital or many people. Uh, if, if suddenly you have some capital and then we say, but there's only gonna be five new impacts, then you divide this huge capital by only five people and the number can get really weird.
No matter what, this is the equation.
Yeah, right, and, and the equation, if either those numbers starts approaching zero, the number can get really odd.
Yeah, so when people are, so one other thing to mention is that redevelopment also matters, so if you're ever upsizing meters. Um, so, you know, some, some cities like College Station is a great example, are, they're se- they're one-story commercial developments are now becoming three or four-story. Uh, because they just don't have any much room around the campus, and that's where everybody wants to be. Um, so those, their meters, they'll usually go from, oh, I need a, the old, old thing needed a one-and-a-half or a two-inch meter, now the new development needs a three-inch meter. You go to that table that Kendall is talking about, and you just do the math, you go, whatever the three-inch minus the two-inch.
Okay, they get credit for the existing one.
And they pay the delta of, of the size, so, you know, so, so for ensuring cities, um, or already mature cities, that. The redevelopment is probably a bigger reason to keep this around, uh, some cities are like, well, why don't I just get rid of this? And that was right before redevelopment started happening, and they said, okay, that's why I'm keeping this around, so, um. That, that's also a little harder to predict, cause it's not land use or zoning, it's just kinda who wants to come in and, and do something different on a current.
Yeah, but if it boosts the amount of water we need and we have to spend capital improvements to, to process that water and wastewater, then, then it's appropriate, I, I understand that, yeah.
So, just so I understand, the, the decision to do the cost share between the developer and the users, that fifty-fifty split, that's done by city council?
So.
Or is that done?
Yes, uh, ultimately, so the, the, the maximum that we cal- calculate is that, that the cost. Uh, that the true cost of what is incurred, we take fifty percent of that and say, council, do you want it to be this number or something less? To go above fifty percent, y'all would have to, you know, you know, choose to go through the actual like rate credit calculation and determine. How much of your rates are, are used to pay for the eligible projects, and you have to subtract that out of the maximum, so basically, it's like a. A little bit of a complicated, um, exercise for the rate credit, so if you wanted to take more than fifty percent.
Which, you said Fullsher did.
Fullsher did.
Okay, they went through, they went through that process of, the bulk of the cost is actually on the developer, not on the user.
Like, like ninety-seven percent or something, is what it just ended up being, because of their, um, their history.
Historically, Friendswood has done a fifty percent, that's why we're continuing that this time.
And when you brief the city council and give them the one-on-one like you're giving us, is that part of the discussion for them to consider that change, or is that independent?
Um, I think if we, if we wanted to go to do that, we would have to change the scope and re, actually, of the project and di- and go through that effort to do. Right now, we're, we're planning on moving forward with the fifty percent methodology, like Kendall said, it's already been decided previously, you could always change it, but, um, that's, that's where it's at.
That's a separate effort.
Separate effort, yeah.
Is, is there a point in time where you switch from one to the other, given our future build-out estimations and things like that?
Yeah, it's a good question, um, you know, for. You know, yeah, maybe, I, I think the more you've already been using rates to pay for stuff, so y'all have been subsidizing projects for, by fifty percent for a long time. So, we would have to go back and extract all of that rate revenue, make su- make sure we're not double-counting. On impact fee money and rate money, so, the further back you go, the harder it is, as well, some of these cities have given up on it. Just because it's like, they're three finance directors ago, and it's like, they gotta call someone that retired to find out what's going on. So the further back you go, the harder it is, as well, some of these cities have given up on it just because it's like they're three finance directors ago and it's like they gotta call someone that retired to find out what's going on.
Usually they go from the more complicated like like uh Folscher did earlier in their history, they go to the more simplified method later, which is where y'all are at.
Yeah, or or, cause that is one thing, is that you are able to use projects you've already built, so you've already built them and it has capacity for future growth. That cost of those projects is still eligible for this impact fee right now, because the impact fee only looks at ten years worth of project use. Well, you don't build a project for ten years, you build it for twenty five, thirty years, so the first time you collect an impact fee for that project, you get the first ten years. And the next time you do it, you get the next ten years and that window moves until you've paid it all off or collected all the money, then you remove that project from the list. And so, you know, it would just depend on how many projects in that existing list you have and how'd you use, how'd you pay for it? Um and I think the more mature and the longer ago it is, the higher that rate credit would be, so. You might even go through the effort and end up at fifty percent anyways for Friendswood, but for a new city, you would not do that. You know, Lake City, we did that, they did a rate credit as well, we just finished this one, um so I would actually say twenty twenty three. And they were maybe like, got to do about eighty percent of the maximum. So they have a lot of new growth on that west side, so driving a lot of the projects, so.
Yeah.
They they got, there's a big city already there, but there's also like a whole other big city coming.
Right.
And and yeah, coming out towards y'all, actually. So yeah, and that's that's the thing about this bottom, these numbers in parentheses, I notice Lake City should be twenty twenty three, because we literally just adopted that a month ago. All of these are when they were adopted, so you, but the reason for putting that there is everybody used to be all closer to y'all. Because the projects were cheaper four years ago and it's all, it's a function of the cost. And so everyone's just kind of moved up as they've adopted and they will probably move up again five years after that number, you know, that's just. As you will, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the only way it wouldn't is if councils decided not to do that. The reality of where y'all are is simply just the cost of what's out in the market, which is more than it was four years ago. You know, really, realistically, we've been doing, a lot of people have not waited the five years because their number was not covering the cost of their project. So they were doing it every three, two years, three years, four years, uh Lake City was only a four year wait, because they were like, hurry up, we're losing, um and so.
So even though they have such a large denominator, they eve- the the numerator overwhelmed that and still made it high. Cause you'd think with all those houses going in, it would be divided by a very large number, but.
You'll build more stuff, more bigger because of that, exactly.
So it 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 favors onto the side of being more expensive to build a lot, even though there's more people sharing it, okay?
Especially on just resi- when you're talking just residential lots that are, you know, in so many acreage, you can only have so many houses. If you if you, it starts getting a little bit more not as simple as that, when you start talking about vertical stuff like College Station, it wasn't that simple.
Okay.
Now, you you say that, I mean, you you could do, you you have to do this every five years, is there a maximum? Like, uh i- if you do it this year, can you do it the following year and the following year, you can just keep going ad nauseam?
Yeah, so and the the process requires public notification, public hearings, so you probably at most could do it every six months or something like that, I mean, you.
So, but there's no no maximum or minimum or anything? I mean, the maximum is five years, but.
Yeah, in real, it just takes some effort to go through this, and it has to be an engineered study.
This is new to me, so I just.
Yeah, some, I mean, some people do get it done at the end and then that development they didn't see is coming and they didn't account for it or there's a project needed. And that's what my, our advice to them is, it has to be worth it. It's gotta be worth getting, you know, collecting that revenue to do it, if it's like, you know, if you're gonna miss out on, you know, fifty thousand bucks or something like that for a small thing, that's not worth it. But if it's a big, you know, some cities, you know, they don't know what's, you know, you know, it's a blank slate a little bit when they have a open land, uh like a Folscher or somebody. But that wouldn't really, wouldn't really happen here. And then, yeah, and council can always change what it is up to that maximum, like Kendall was saying, at any time, by ordinance, they just gotta do, so every two weeks, I guess, at whatever council meeting. But, you know, so s- some of these cities have changed it within the five year period, but it's it's pretty rare, um because most. You know, it probably is a lot of like, either the pandemic, oh, let me, let us lower it and, you know, growth won't happen anymore, then all of a sudden, it's like, well, everything got expensive and growth kept happening, so they went back to the maximum. That that's kind of what happened is um look, being a little bit reactive or trying to be proactive, but.
And these are not projected costs, these are actual costs, right?
So the the, these are projected.
Oh, projected capital costs, okay.
Uh uh so then the the existing projects that you've already built, those are actual.
Those are real numbers, right, okay.
Yeah, we'll get those exact costs of what y'all paid and then the projected costs are um projected into FY twenty to twenty twenty three dollars. What we think that the bid will happen, and this is always a little bit of a source of contention, because that is a, you don't know until the bid day, oh, what things actually cost. And we want the city to be, you know, covered on that. You can set them too high, you know, you can't just say, this plant's gonna cost me a billion dollars, because you can't overcollect. If you collect more money than what it actually costs, then you actually have to do a rebate, which is, if you, but if you do fifty percent methodology, you would have to be twice as wrong. You'd have to be, you know what I'm saying, to, you you won't collect more money, because you're only collecting half of it anyways. And so there is a, you know, you don't go too high for that reason.
Yeah, you do your best good faith estimate, right?
Good faith estimate and um and then you can include inflation and the interest like Kendall was mentioning. You know, when the interest rates were two or three percent, it was like not that big of a deal, but that's one of the big drivers of the cost going up as well, is that if you're, you know, borrowing money for these projects, the projects are way more expensive and the interest rates are also a lot higher, so you're actually getting like a little. Uh i- if the costs are double, you're actually, impact fees going more than double, just because the interest rates are a lot higher um these days, so.
Have you ever known of a city that where the prices have gone down for the impact fees?
So what do you mean?
So. Update the impact fee, the.
Right.
Yeah, uh very rarely, that's not what they're trying, it's not what you're trying to do, but um, because you're trying to, you really, the point of the five year update is to adjust to the current, the the current reality. You know, and the current reality of our history has never gone, prices haven't really gone down um for a five year time period, but if if it was, it was because the council set it that way. And some people phase them in, you know, they'll incre- you know, they'll, you know, they have a large increase and they'll do, you know, maybe ninety percent and they they'll phase it in over over the five year period. As long as they never go over the maximum, you can do that, but you're you're missing out on revenue when you do that, so.
I believe in our last update, I think our sewer rate went down and our water actually went up. So um the fee overall went up, but the sewer did go down, because depending on the projects.
It depends on the project.
Yeah.
We probably didn't really explain that, but the the red, the the blue and the green.
That's right.
That's the wa- the blue is the water and the green is the wastewater. You know, a lot of these product, these communities around us have gone through big wastewater treatment plant expansions recently. Groundwater doesn't cost that much different than it used to, but the wastewater treatment plant capacity to treat that, the cost of that has gone up, so that's why there's been a lot more green buildings. In a lot of these cities, you know, see what happens with Friendswood with the current mix of projects.
And I I believe y'all are in the same boat, but a lot of, some of these cities are, you know, pay, are wholesale customers of City of Houston, so they pay a rate to the City of Houston. Whether you, you know, whether you like it or not, you're you're covering that with rates. And so there's not a big water treatment plant to build, Houston's doing that and y'all are paying them a rate to cover it. Yeah, it's even, that's even more prevalent in the north Texas area. Yeah, so that's that's, I think that's a big reason why Lake City's water is high, because they built their wastewater plant at a good time. And so it's not that high, but their water is bill's about to become due to Houston and it's just big, because it's the timing. You have more, I know. Maybe more than you wanted.
Alright, we are, we are coming in for a landing. So in terms of schedule, um the top is where we are now, um we'll come back in about three or four weeks and and give the informational session to to council. About a month after that is is when we are gonna ask them to set the resolution for the public hearing, that's just a required action by the state to say, we're gonna have a public hearing. Uh that public hearing, if you skip all the way to the bottom, is not until November, right? So we're gonna actually come back um to to you, to the SEAC in September. Um with with the draft answers, the draft impact fee, land use CIP and and the impact fee itself. Once once the the gap between September fourteenth and October fourth, that's, we wanted to have some room there for y'all to give us your input again, and if we need to update and change anything before you advertise, that's what that time is for. The report itself will be advertised and available to the public for thirty days before the public hearing, again, part of the state requirement. You you, the only thing at that point you're on the hook to do is to give your written comments to council at least five days before the public hearing, so we have October twenty fifth, just to give a little buffer room on there. Um and then the public hearing on on November sixth. That's it.
So Kendall, I, if I remember right, we did this last time, our role is basically to kind of review your calculation for the numerator. You know, the capital cost of those included everything, did they include things that shouldn't have been, just kind of looking over your shoulder? And then on the denominator of the growth rates and does that seem reasonable or did you take, you know, estimates that don't seem reasonable or we missed something? And so we're just kind of reviewing your calculations uh to see if if we see something different.
That's absolutely right, yep. And again, Pearland was a great example, just literally a few months ago, went through this exact same process. We took the the draft uh impact fee report to 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 SEAC, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission. And they said, hey, we, you know, y'all wouldn't have even known this, but literally like last meeting, we changed this section of the of the future land use plan. So we took that back and it wasn't a huge adjustment, but it was an adjustment and adjustment and it was reflective of their latest and greatest understanding and projections of the city. And again, that's that's just really what the state's looking for there, so.
So your job is to make your thinking visible in terms of how you did the calculations and our job is to look it over and see if if we see something you didn't.
Make your thinking visible, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that, I like that. That's good, yeah, that's right. That's right, that's right.
Any more comments? Thank you, Kendall, that was very good.
Thank y'all, pleasure being here.
Next item on the agenda is to announce that the next Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meetings have, regular meetings have been scheduled for Thursday, June, July twenty seventh and Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty three. Now we reached the portion of our our schedule where we get city council updates from our liaison council member, brand new council member, Joe Matringa.
Good evening, good evening.
Welcome back.
Yes, yes, it is different being on this side. Guys asked good questions tonight, oh, so um my stated role to be here, uh per the announcement, is that anything that came up at council related directly to uh planning and zoning. But there really wasn't anything directly related to planning and zoning, so I thought I'm uh precluded from going into great details about the rest of the meeting. But I would like to give you just some, a really very, very high level, just in case you haven't been able to either attend or see the, see the uh video yet. Uh one of the biggest things we talked about in the meeting was drainage projects, so we went over several of the high level drainage projects. The Forest Bend, that's uh moving fairly quickly along, the um what was it, Imperial Estates, Castlewood, there's some small projects going in on Castlewood if you're, if you go down that way. And then the Dixie Farm Road, obviously is the big one out there that everybody's working towards, um you know, the big projects further out, but huge impacts. You know, over over a thousand acre feet anticipated. We also talked about the budget, which is topical for this time of year, which will also be on the agenda for approval on the September eleventh meeting as well. So the budget, we're looking at, at this point, the preliminary draft budget is looking at a four cent tax increase from roughly forty nine cents to fifty three cents. So continuing staff, uh city council, everybody's continuing to work to to get that down and still look for opportunities, evaluating scope of that, think what can come out. Uh what can be put off, that sort of thing, so that's continuing, that's the the major effort right now with city council. Uh water line breaks, we talked a little bit about those, it's the, it is that season, as it gets hotter and hotter outside with no water, rain happening. Uh we get more and more water line breaks in the city, so just be aware that that that's out there and uh there's a huge effort by city staff to to address those. Uh last is the, on the city council is the bonds. We approved the issuance of thirty million dollars, which is the last tranche of the fifty two million dollars that was approved by voters in twenty nineteen. Uh this is all going for for drainage projects. So that, those bonds have gotten issued and there's a schedule for when that money comes in and to to be spent. So that's that's the general thing, other than obviously, Fourth of July was a great event this year and I hope everyone was able to participate in that. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll continue with uh communications from and comments from our commissioners, Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir. No, sir, but uh thank you for all the support staff, for their good work.
Commissioner Kerner?
Nothing for me.
You don't want to thank the staff?
Brian, Brian already handled it, but I will thank actually our visitors today who gave us that wonderful one on one presentation.
It's true.
I learned something that I didn't know.
Commissioner Conrad?
Thank you to the staff, first of all. No, the presentations were really, really informative, very good.
As if I don't say this enough to you two, but thank you, and then also. And thanks for the presentation, that that was helpful.
Even the staff, they lock in little closets, really, I guess.
Uh I did attend the Drainage District meeting a couple of weeks ago, I did not make the one this week. And just item of note, they have two new members on the board. Seem to be a little contention around that, but I think they're good people, so that's it.
And I also am second to none in my appreciation of staff. Uh I did notice that in the last city council meeting, there was a presentation by our attorney uh about the new laws coming up from the state of Texas and new requirements. And we've talked offline and at some time in the not too distant future, our attorney will update us on the implications of any new things coming out of how Austin is helping us do our job and what we need to do differently in the future that we can no longer do different, that uh have changed. Any updates from Aubrey?
Uh just your, the DRC report for June was in your backup material, um we only had two meetings in June and they were uh both on existing buildings. Basically being um reoccupied with different uses, um so that was in your backup material. And uh just a reminder that the APA conference is coming up in November in Corpus Christi. Um I think I sent out an email a while back, um if any of you, you know, have intentions of going, if you just give me a heads up. We won't, we won't register you now, um there, I I can't remember what the deadline is right now, but um it's November eighth through the tenth, it's a little later this year. So like I said, just if anybody's planning on going, uh let me know, um we have the budget to send anybody who wants to go, so um keep me posted.
Thank you, I I, it's a a great team bam- uh building thing, as well as you learn things that you didn't know, that you probably don't realize you should know. So I encourage anybody who can to take the time off and and go to Corpus, it's a nice city too.
Uh the eighth through the tenth, yeah, and there's usually a Planning and Zoning Commissioner track um with sessions specifically for commissioners.
Is there going to be this year?
Uh I believe so. It's not the combined.
No, they haven't put the schedule out, but they're not doing the the combined um in person and and online, unfortunately, when Kathy joined us for the first time, it was during the pandemic and.
That was horrible.
They tried a new format and it, it did not work. And we swear up and down, other than that, it's always a really great experience for the commissioners.
Please give us another chance, give us another chance. Becky, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening and the July thirteenth, twenty twenty three Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. With that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.